Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 11, 2023, open session meeting of the Kent County Public School System. This is officially opening the meeting. The time is exactly 5:30 p.m. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, the approval of the agenda. The administration is recommending the approval of this agenda. Do we have a motion to do so?
I motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Mr. Rhodes has the second. Do we have any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is moving into closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members of this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, Mr. David Burkhouse, legal counsel, who is filling in for Adam Constance this evening, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, will move to closed session under general provisions Article 3-305b. This is to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The topic, as I just read, is applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and any other personnel matters. The reason for this item being closed session is that public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive, personal, and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. With that being said, the administration is recommending that we move into closed session. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
I move that we move into closed session.
Ms. McGee has the motion to move into closed session. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Ms. Dorsey. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. We will move into closed session. The time is 5:32 p.m. We will be back in open session at approximately 6:30 p.m., just under an hour.
Welcome to the September 11th, 2023 Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. This is the second open session portion of the meeting, so I'd like to formally open this session up. The first item on the agenda in this portion of the session tonight is to report on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Husson, supervisor of human resources, Mr. David Barkhouse, who is filling in for Adam Consis tonight, legal counsel, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, met in closed session under general provisions, Article 3-305B, Section 1, excuse me, was to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose for to do this, the topic, as I just mentioned, was applicants for new hires, resignations, volunteers, transfers, extra pay, extra duty, and any other personnel matters. The reason to have this in closed session is that public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive, personal, and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. This session was for information and discussion purposes only, no action was taken. Personnel actions will be voted upon by this board in Section 5B during the superintendent's report portion of the agenda this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Messick, if you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everyone to remain standing, going kind of out of character, just asking for a moment of silence for the 9/11 victims and their families, for those that passed on this day 22 years ago, and those that have passed since then and have dealt with sickness and struggles, also keep their families in mind. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from the August 14th, 2023, open session meeting. The administration is recommending approval of these minutes as presented from the August 14th, 2023, open session meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion that we approve the minutes of our open session, August 14th, 2023.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rhodes. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ms. Messick?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion passes as presented. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Gail, do we have a public participation?
Yes, we do.
Okay, just a reminder, speakers.
We have another one.
Okay.
We got more coming up.
Okay. Well, yes, I'll hang for a second. Sorry, guys.
Yeah. We've got some more coming.
Manley brings them up, we do have some rules for public participation here at the board meetings. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It's not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent or write a letter to the Board of Education, and a response will be sent back to you. I will read off the names as I receive them in order. I will also tell you that I will be counting or clocking this speaking portion at three minutes. When we hit 30 seconds, I will notify you, and at the end of three seconds, I'm sorry, three minutes, we'll ask that you finish your comments as much as you can. Okay, first up is Robbie Baer.
I'm just here regarding the KCMS project. I just wanted to voice my personal support for option one, which is, I believe, is the replacement of the middle school in Chestertown. I think it's super important to leave the school in Chestertown, in part because Chestertown has a whole lot of untapped potential, honestly. I feel like the school system does not take advantage of the resources that we have there as well as we could. I worry a little bit for the long-term health of the public school system from if we move the school. I understand why it makes sense to move the middle school out to Wharton, but I worry a little bit that the farther out of sight and out of mind the schools are, and the less a part of the community they are, the easier it will be to tighten belts and make funding less available, to say that we don't need certain programs and all of that. I do think that the more we see our students walking through the community every day, the more we recognize that they are an important asset of ours that we need to invest in, then the more engaged we as a community are in the schools, the more successful that our schools are. And I hope, I would really like to be part of a sort of a new way of looking at the middle school in which the town itself embraces the middle school, we get some volunteers in there, we make it our project. So that's what I'm going to be spending my efforts on. I really hope that the middle school stays in Chestertown. I think we have a lot of assets there that make great walkable field trips to Washington College, to down to the river, like all different things that we can take advantage of, and we have been taking advantage of, but we could do a lot more. So, option one, I hope we can stay in Chestertown. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Our next speaker is Ashton Mude.
My name is Ashton Mude. I am one of the music teachers for Kent County Public Schools. On September 6th, I resigned from teaching in KCPS. My last day will be December 21st. Over the summer, the Board of Education voted to cut a music position. While I recognize and empathize with the budget crisis, cutting that music position will negatively impact our students and programs, and has been a catalyst to several other poor decisions. On July 20th, I received an email that in order to continue offering fifth grade band, I would now be teaching all general music classes at Rock Hall in Galena, as well as offering band at all three schools, only being allotted 45 minutes a week at each school to do so. The limitation would mean I have to teach potentially over 30 students in a room at the same time, six different instruments. When I responded to this email, I listed several reasons why it was not the best for our students. I provided data that proves what providing more individualized instruction does for our students' growth and abilities. I explained that the setup they were creating would be chaotic. In the email I received back, I was told I shouldn't assume the situation would be chaotic. I should be grateful for being able to teach fifth grade band because it was in consideration of being cut, and I should be applauding the principals for remaining dedicated to offering it. During the first day the teachers were back in the schools, I received my schedules. I noticed that chorus was not being offered at Galena or Rock Hall. Because of the number of classes at Rock Hall and Galena, I typically have a few holes in my schedule, not filled up by general music classes. We used one of those open spaces at Galena to offer fifth grade chorus last school year. At Rock Hall, the other music teacher incorporated chorus into a club that occurred during the school day once a week. All three schools started successful choral programs last year. Even with teaching at those three schools this year, I still had a few holes in my schedule. Instead of using one of those holes to offer chorus, my few holes were filled up with assisting a fully-staffed pre-K classroom. I went back and forth emailing the admin trying to find a way to continue offering it during the school day. I was told the elementary principals made the decision to cut it during the school day because they couldn't all offer it during the day. If I wanted to do it, I could offer it before school as an unpaid opportunity. I've been told multiple times that our schools don't need to be cookie cutter. Garnett's music teacher is now on the high school's schedule in terms of her contracted time, so she offers chorus before school while being on the clock. To say I can offer chorus before school as an unpaid opportunity, even though there is ample time during the school day, is not only inequitable but disrespectful. I emailed admin at the school level and district level-
30 seconds.
-saying that if we could not sit down together and find solutions to this issue, I would resign. We met in person last week. The only compromise or solution offered was that I could use that time while assisting the fully-staffed pre-K class for an hour and a half each week to do small group music enrichment with the pre-K students. I have a kindergarten through 12th grade teaching certificate. I hold no special certificates or training for pre-K. While I was willing to work with pre-K students some of the assigned time, I still wanted to find a way to offer chorus to our excited fifth graders, especially since I had-
Thank you, Ms. Mude. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Nicholson.
Could I?
No, we cannot.
It's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Kim Nicholson. I am the founder and president of the Jared White Healing Through Music Foundation, and also Jared's mom. I have been supporting the school system ever since I started the founding, well, for a long time, but since I started the foundation 300 years ago when I lost Jared due depression. So, I'm here to tell you that I started the foundation, it's a music foundation. My son was a musician, and music was his entire life. It's what kept him here as long as he was here, for 19 years. I will say that I will continue and will always support the school system and the music and the arts program. But I also will say that I'm very disappointed in some of the cuts that have been made to especially the music program. This is a really old topic that I think that you guys have heard decades now, of music and arts programs being cut. It's not just in Kent County, it's really everywhere. It is just an old topic. It's the first programs that usually always get cut. And to me, it's a really backwards way of thinking. We, if we want, you know, better grades for math, we need to expand our music programs. We want better grades for science, we need to expand our arts program. These are the things that keep kids engaged in our schools. It's what kept my son engaged in school, it's what kept him going. We have two different sides of our brains, creative and analytical, and they don't work without the other. Our school systems need the arts, they need music. I think we should be expanding our arts and our music programs, not cutting them. I do not know anything about the funding, about the school system fundings, or how it is appropriated, but I do know that this is a topic that we have for decades as a community, as a state, as a nation, have continued to go over. It's just like, you know, we're doing the same thing over and over again, and expecting the same, expecting different results.
30 seconds.
And we all know what that means. So, I just want to say, I will continue to support the school system, but I'm very disappointed in the cuts that we have made. And, you know, we bought t-shirts for the kids last year, and I just gave a $500 donation to Galena for music instruments, and we bought the t-shirts for chorus last year, and now we don't even have chorus. So, I'm really disappointed, and I hope we do what we're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholson.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gillian Spiro.
I don't need three minutes. Ms. Yoder has prepared much of our, what we feel compelled to share with the public and the board. I will say, coming from the admin and principal perspective, and coming from those of you sitting up here in positions where we've had to make cuts, we've made cuts all around. All of us have been passionate about where to make them, and we were very careful and intentional to make sure that no one area suffered. That being said, chorus was not something always offered. We were able to offer it last year. We did make the commitment to keep band. We keep the commitment to build into our master's schedule music for pre-K, even though it's not required. So, we have specialist teachers. We don't have them in our buildings five days a week. And one thing I want to point out is just because a specialist's teacher may have a opening in their schedule, students don't. So, there's suggestions about offering chorus with different groups of people or different ages, and we were open to sort of looking at what we could do. I just want to wrap up by saying that we have felt the burden, but the commitment to the arts. Our community partners, we've done, you know, I, both Becky and I had the resident artists come and do work with our students. I have murals on the side of my building. We had a huge event where we, you know, we showcased and had a ribbon cutting. We find great value and respect for our community partners. We hope to continue that work because we know that, we want to continue to expand opportunities for students, but their day didn't get any longer. And we do have a commitment to core content areas, so pulling them out of math for chorus, logistically was very hard to navigate. But we do want to emphasize that we value the arts, we respect that creative thinking and, you know, is a way to reach a lot of students, thinking outside the box. But I just wanted to speak to the challenges, but our deep commitment as admin in creating a schedule to allow for that.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Becky Yoder.
Couch and members of the board. I am Becky Yoder, principal of Galena Elementary. I want to make it clear to you and to the community that Galena Elementary is offering general music classes to all students in grades pre-K through grade 5. Galena also will be offering beginning band to any fifth grade student that is interested in learning to play a musical instrument. Due to scheduling conflicts this year, Galena will not be able to offer chorus to fifth grade students during the instructional day without compromising the required instruct time allotments for ELA, math, science, and social studies. All specialist teachers are providing additional sport and/or enrichment, enrichment learning to my students during their extra blocks of time this year, due to being down one teacher and one instructional assistant. As we all know, the budget was very tight. At the beginning of the summer, the administration was concerned that we would not be able to offer band or chorus. However, by working together, the elementary principals were able to provide band for all KCPS fifth graders who want to participate. I want to ensure you that I make decisions based on what is in the best interest for all students at Galena Elementary.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on into the agenda. Ms. Gail, if we don't have any, if we do not have any additional, okay, very good. We'll move into the superintendent's report. Dr. Couch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Getz, members of the board. As Mr. Getz noted, today marks the 22nd anniversary for the 9/11 attacks on the World Trade Center and the Pentagon. September 11th is nationally, is nationally recognized as Patriot Day, a day of service and remembrance. We can never forget the losses of all of the individuals that were, that were taken from us on this day. And I think many of us can think back, and at least from my perspective, I remember exactly what I was doing at the time of the first attack. So, I would also like for us to remember and keep the families of those who were lost on September the 11th in our thoughts today. I also wanted to issue a big thank you to the Bay Area Association of Realtors. They held a Back to School Night trivia fundraiser at the Bluebird, and last, or I think it was a couple weeks ago at least, they came and donated a ton of school supplies for our students, so we were able to provide that. I know Ms. Jacobowitz was trying to help them bring in all of the supplies that they brought for our students, so that was, I just wanted to say thank you and give a huge shout out to them. We've had a big month in terms of the last time we met because we welcomed our new teachers on August the 22nd. We had 21 certificated employees that we brought on as new staff members, so excited about bringing them and integrating them into our family. But we also had an opening day meeting on August the 30th at Kent County High School Auditorium, and I also wanted to thank all of the board members that came to that presentation. I had an opportunity to highlight a lot of the accomplishments that we've had as a school system, and I was also able to highlight a lot of the literacy initiatives and the math, the initiatives that we have in place to improve our math scores and our math instruction at the secondary level. I think that for us, it's always a challenge in terms of analyzing our data and looking to see what we can do better, and always thinking ahead in terms of what's going to make the biggest difference and impact on our students. So, we are excited about what we're doing at the high school level, offering a year-long algebra class, Algebra I class, and then also the book studies that we have in place at Kent County Middle School, to dive deep into the math standards and to ensure that we are designing rigorous and challenging math lessons for our students, but also ensuring that they are knowledgeable in what we are teaching, and that we have a way to assess their proficiency of all of the skills that we're teaching. So, we're excited about those new initiatives. We had an opportunity to recognize our stu, our, excuse me, our employees for their years of service, and that's always a fun opportunity to do that. We recognized employees that have been here for five years, 10 years. We do five-year increments, so we were able to acknowledge them. And I think for us, the highlight of the day was when we awarded the Teacher of the Year a leased vehicle from Hertrich Ford from Elton's, so that was very exciting. Of course, she made a comment about, "I wish I would have known, I might have dressed different for the occasion," but it's always a fun, fun opportunity to provide something special for our Teacher of the Year, and to acknowledge the impact they have with our students. The kickoff meeting ended with a presentation by Charlie Applestein, and the topic that he noted was "No Such Thing as a Bad Kid." It was about understanding and responding to students with emotional and behavioral challenges, using a positive, trauma-informed, strength-based approach, and creating a positive strength-based culture in our schools. And I will tell you that it was very well received by our staff, and many of them felt like it was a positive way to reacquaint everyone about the importance of developing positive relationships with our students. So, I think it was incredibly well-received. I think he ran out of books because he sold a lot of them, so that was really nice and a wonderful start to the year. Last week was our first week of school. I spent a couple of days being in every, I was at every school multiple times during the week, and I can tell you, I felt like this year we had one of the most positive starts at all of our schools, and I think that is directly attributed to the work that goes on in the summer, not only by our administration, by our principals, because they put in a lot of time in the summer preparing for our students, and I really believe it paid off. So, we owe a great deal of gratitude and thanks to our principals and our administrators, but I was also impressed with the high energy level of our teachers. They were excited to be back. Kids seemed really excited to be back, and I hope that sets the stage for an incredibly positive year. So, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the personnel actions. Mr. Hushen.
Thank you, President Getz, school board members, Dr. Couch. Each month, the board receives a report of stated personnel actions. Those actions are discussed during closed session, and then a vote is held here in open session. With one amendment that was discussed in closed session, the administration seeks approval of those stated personnel actions.
Okay, as Mr. Hushen has mentioned, the administration is recommending approval for these stated personnel actions. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Dorsey. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you so much, appreciate it, Ms. Hushen.
Your role.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the KCMS feasibility study discussion.
I'm sorry, just one of the questions was, just reminder what the amendment was, and it was a correction on where the employee was being transferred to, the location.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, the next item is the Kent County Middle School feasibility study discussion. This was initially going to be brought back to the Board of Education for a vote, but I felt strongly that it was important to share additional information, give you an opportunity to reflect on that information, and then I know that we are going to have discussion about a retreat this month, have an opportunity to have some open dialogue about that information at the retreat, and then come back in October and make a, I will be prepared to make a recommendation. I felt that it, it just felt a little awkward to present that information cold as, at one meeting, and then expect you to make a decision right away. So, I felt that it was important to go through the information with you today. So, just as a reminder, I know this is kind of like, why do we keep talking about it? But for those people that tuned in, we started with five different options, and the first option was to renovate the existing school, and the cost for renovation of the existing school, of course, is you- existing school, of course, as you know, that's still an old school, and we talked about that at length, and, and so there were some concerns about option one. Option two was replacement of the new middle school at the Chestertown site, which would be brand-new construction, and the cost for that, for that option was about $55.8 million. Option three was consideration of an alternate site in Chestertown, and that option, we assumed would be about $61.3 million because we would have to purchase the land and then actually identify a site. And that was option three. Option four was replacement of middle school at the Wharton site, which it would be in close proximity to the high school, and that cost was 50, initially it was less, but we went back and made an adjustment to add a full kitchen, so that, you'll see that adjustment added into that, the cost. So it's $54.5 million to build the same building that we would build in Chestertown, but this time it has a full kitchen, so you'll see, so we're comparing apples to apples. And then option five was to consider a replacement of Chestertown Middle School as an attachment to Kent County High School, and that cost was $50.5 million. We talked about all of those options, and after much discussion, we narrowed it down to option two and option four as really the only two options that felt, felt right to all of us and ensured that our students had the, the kind of facility that we wanted them to have. Option two is replacement of the middle school at the Chestertown site. We talked about what that would look like and more or less where we felt the building would be placed. There would be some concern in terms of while the, the construction was happening, because it could be done while the students were still occupying the present building, but they wouldn't have access to the field. So that would be one challenge that we could overcome. Certainly, I'm not, I'm not being negative at all in that way, I'm just being factual in terms of that would be something that we would have to overcome, but it would be temporary, because once the building is built, then we would have everything in place, and the old building would be demolished and turned into parking and various supports that we would need at that school. That present site is about 15 acres. Option four is a replacement of the middle school at the Wharton site. Again, as our architects put together a proposed area in which the school would be constructed, we were very clear that this is only schematic in, in terms of the final, when we got to the place where we were actually doing a design, if this was the location that we decided on, it may actually be placed in a different area, and the, the actual floor plan might change somewhat. But we spent a lot of time talking to our teachers, coming up with the ideas in terms of what would be the best floor plan for the students and still meet the square footage requirements by the state, because we're, we have to adhere to what they say they will fund in terms of the number of students. Just a reminder that we proposed that the new middle school would house grades five through eight, so we would be adding fifth graders into the middle school, and the reason for that is to free up more room at our elementary schools for growth and also to meet the blueprint requirements which require us to have three-year-old and four-year-old programs. This was an example of the, the floor plan. It's essentially the same floor plan that would be offered at both locations, and I won't go through the floor plan itself. This is, this is pretty much the same plan that we've talked about multiple times. We, it would be a two-story building, and we would group all of the grade levels into families, which is really the, the way that most middle schools, new middle schools are being built at this point in time, where you keep the grade levels together and you have a family so that the kids move around from family to family. So you've got the fifth grade and the sixth grade family, seventh grade family, and eighth grade family. And we try to work it to where the special education teacher is in close proximity to each of the families, and so this is, really meets the needs of our students and would provide a much better learning environment, educational environment for our students and for our faculty. We did put out a survey to our families, and we asked them to respond to a variety of questions. Which of the two options for the middle school that's being under consideration by Kent County Board of Ed do you prefer? We had 141 responses. As you know, we have just about 1,700 families, and we sent it out to everyone. We sent multiple invitations for families to participate. We sent robocalls. We, we put it out by email, by text, asking them to, to respond to the survey. We had 141 responses, and as you can see, the 60% of our families that responded, and I want to make that noted, of the ones that responded, 60% said they wanted to see it in Wharton, the new school in Wharton. 37% chose Chestertown, and 3% said they want to see a new school, but they don't really care where the location is. They had no strong opinion. What I would like to emphasize is in a lot of my conversations with families, there are a lot of families that didn't respond because they really are ambivalent about the location. They want to see a new school. I don't think anybody is opposed to having a new school, but many of them are pretty ambivalent about the location of the school. So for me, knowing that I'm going to have to come forward with a recommendation to the Board of Ed, I felt like we needed more information. We needed to find a way to gather more information and to be able to sort out, you know, what, what is, what makes one location stronger than another. So what I asked my administration to do and the principals to do is to begin a pros and cons list. So we looked at the Chestertown site, and we listed all the pros and the cons of that site, and then we did the same for the Wharton. And sometimes the positives on one side were the negatives on the other.
Before we leave this slide, does this include any emails that came in to the email?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, and what I would go back, before I go down that road, I should probably remind you that we did put out a survey for the entire community.
Right.
And that came back almost dead, I mean, again, it was like 49, 50%. 49% wanted one, 50% wanted another. So still, there was pretty much not a front-runner in helping us make that determination. So we had all of our principals' list and our administrators' list, and we spent a lot of time reflecting and being honest about what the pros and the cons were for each site. And speaking with Dr. Lever, came up with a really interesting way of trying to sort out, because in some cases, we had pros that we should really heavily weight and say, "This is a pro," but it, it's heavily weighted, and we should weight it accordingly, so we could help sort out, you know, all of the information that was coming our way. And if there was a con, but it was like a, a minor con, and it wasn't going to make that big of a difference in the overall education of our students, then we would weight that as a less important con. So we took all of that information, and we organized it by category. So I'd like to provide this to you. I didn't, I, I'll show, I'll show some of the, I'll show some of the details for you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You got one?
Okay, there's one more.
Okay, got it. We didn't put all of the details on the slideshow, but you have, as board members, all the details. And so I assembled about 21, oh, excuse me, we, here's kind of a, an overview of some of the pros and the cons. So for option two, some of the major pros, now, there was a whole list of other pros, and, and you've got that entire list, but I just, for the sake of conversation today, I wanted to highlight some of those for you. The pros for Chestertown, access to Chestertown resources, Sultana, the library, Washington College, and other, you know, businesses in Chestertown. Separate middle school identity, that was an important piece. PE, not having to share fields and tennis courts, that was a pro for keeping it in Chestertown. Safety, walkable sidewalks, low traffic speed, there was some concerns about, and you'll see that as a con for the Wharton site. Supports existing community if we keep it in Chestertown, and it may attract families that want to have their children walking to school. So those were pros. Cons for the Chestertown site, it's a small site. In the whole scheme of what would be the, the most desirable site, 15 acres in all intensive purposes, is small. Loss of specialist time between sites, so if you're traveling from the high school and you've got shared teachers that are, that are shared between the high school and the middle school, that could be a con. Reduced interaction between middle school and high school. In other words, if the school was at the Wharton site, you might have students that could be mentoring. The high school students could walk over and help mentor the middle school students. We talked about that also being the case with the teacher academy. You know, when we had Wharton at the high school, the, the high school students were able to go to Wharton Elementary and then work on their ability to work with students and with the teacher academy. Possible congestion on the city streets. Adding another grade level at a site, you know, would that add more congestion? Wharton site, there were pros, possible middle school exposure to participation in high school programs and extracurricular. At one point, there was a discussion about it being a pro, that they could actually participate in athletic programs, and we verified that that is not an option. Eighth graders are not allowed to practice, nor, nor are they allowed to be on any high school athletic teams, but they could be part of the band, the eighth graders could be part of the band, they could be a part of other extracurricular activities, but they could not be on athletic teams. It would be an efficient coordination among teachers and teaching specialists. They could be within walking distance, so that could promote some positives. It would be easier for families that had students both at the middle school and the high school. And we heard this with regard to some of the comments that were shared by the parents that filled out the survey. They said, "You know, we only have one place we could drop off the students, it would be a lot easier for us." The cons for the Wharton site, it blocks future expansion for the high school. I mean, one of the things that has kept me up at night is, you know, if 10 years from now, 15 years from now, we get to a place where we're expanding, the community is expanding, and say we decide to build a new high school or add to the existing high school, then are we going to come back and say, "We have no more real estate on this campus, and now, oops, now we can't do that?" And that concerns me a lot, because I think we have to be thinking about the future in terms of, we don't know what the future will bring, but we have to plan for that. That's our job as a board, and that's our job as a school system. PE and athletics. Yes, they can share some of the fields, but the con is the distance between the facilities. So you've got shorter periods, you don't have block scheduling, so you have shorter periods at the middle school. So by the time they actually walk to the field that would be available to them at the high school, how much time are they actually going to be able to use the facilities? Are we talking about 15 minutes, and then they're going to have to turn around and walk back? So then that could be a detriment to the PE program and to our athletes at the middle school. And then, is the high school actually going to get priority? In other words, will the middle school be the stepchild? And so the high school would get priority to using the fields first, and the middle school would have to be plugged in when they could. And I bring that as a perspective as a con, because coming from another school system where we shared facilities with one of our middle schools and the high school, I can tell you that that happened a lot, that the middle school was the stepchild, and they didn't, they always had to work around the high school's schedule. So when we were able to get new funding to build a new school, we added in the opportunity to build new fields at the middle schools so that they didn't have to share facilities with the high school. So I think that's a con for the Wharton site. So the thing that we looked at when we looked at all the pros and cons again, were there were multiple advantages and disadvantages to both sites, and again, it wasn't simple. It was still ambiguous, because it still didn't help us to come and say, "Well, one site really shines ahead of the other." So what we did was, we wanted to figure out in an objective way to help us with the decision process. So what we did was, tried to group, and we, I think with Dr. Lever's help, we assembled 21 administrators, principals, core instructors, physical education, Dr. Lever, of course, and we tried to include people from the high school, from the middle school, and we looked at all of the pros and cons, and we organized them by academic, by core academics. You know, if this was a con, did it fall into the core academics category? Did it fall into non-core activities? Did it fall into student support? Then we looked at academic with faculty. Were there some particular pros and cons that really focused in on just the faculty? And is that more advantageous for one site over the other? We looked at physical education. If that's an important aspect, then, you know, we wanted to put all the cons and the pros and the cons by site under each of these categories. We looked at social-emotional. Where did the cons fill into the social-emotional development of our students? And then other. How important was it for the facility and the facility operations and general perceptions, the general perceptions of the community and general perception? So what we did, before we even looked at the pros and cons, we assigned how much weight we wanted to give to each one of these categories. And I thought that was really a nice exercise for us, because before we looked at it by site, we said, "Okay, for academics, how important is that? Is that, should that be a five? Should that be a one? You know, what should it be?" So we went and assigned every single, we assigned a weight to every single category, and then by site, we were able to look at the impact of each of the pros and the cons, and then compare the scores to see if it really made a difference. So here is the, the weight that we looked at. Is it important? Is it extremely important? Or is it low importance? And you can see where we weighted all of these categories by, by area. And I think that helped us, not only did it help us to assign the weight, it helped us to really talk through, you know, just how important all of these things are going to impact our students. to impact our students long-term. And then we went through and looked at all of the pros and cons, which I, we didn't put all of them up there. Like I said, each of you as board members have that. And we went and did, and rated each one of these factors by site. And you can see that it really sorted it out for us in terms of where it fell within the scoring. So you'll see that when we were done with this exercise, we were, we met together as a group for almost a little over an hour and a half, close to two hours. And so we gave it a lot of consideration. And as you can see, when we were done with scoring and weighting all of these categories, the Chestertown site came out overwhelmingly as the number one site for the group of individuals that we put together. So you'll see, it wasn't even close. You know, by all the other means that we were trying to sort out and come up with a way to help make that recommendation, it was pretty ambiguous. But when we went through this exercise, you'll see the final score for Chestertown was 101 and the final score for Wharton was 15. So it was not even close. And I think it really opened up a lot of conversation and it really helped us to really be objective in terms of not just listing a bunch of pros and cons, but actually talking about it and thinking long-term. You'll see that, you know, so there's the final scoring. You'll see the location factor, you'll see how we came up with the scoring there. So that's a little bit, the same information, but a bigger, a bigger slide. And so the results were Chestertown site is more favorable for core instruction, student support, physical education, and social-emotional. Chestertown is more favorable for student safety and security. We spent a lot of time talking about the fact that we're, we're looking at adding fifth graders into the high, into the middle school. There are no sidewalks that are available for students to walk. So you're going to have a bunch of students that are going to be walking from the Butlertown area that walk to the high school now. And we've got a highway there, we've got no sidewalks, and we're going to be putting fifth graders in a position of potentially walking to the high school, which we spent a lot of time talking about. And we felt that that was unfavorable for student safety and for security. So Chestertown came out to be more favorable because they have sidewalks and it's not going to be on, of course, they got to cross 213, I get that. But overall, if you're within walking distance of the, of the middle school, you're not going to be crossing those areas for the most part. The two locations are indifferent when it came to teacher performance and satisfaction. So we determined that even though we said it was a pro for the teachers to collaborate and to work together, they could still do that with our half-day release days, they could do that through virtual meetings, we could still facilitate that. It may not be as easy, but it was still manageable. And that was not as important. The two locations weighed equally for non-core opportunities, extracurricular, recreation, and enrichment. And one of the things that we talked about, now, it would definitely be a struggle because the, the, the middle school and the high school are on different schedules. We've got seven-period day for the middle school and we've got block scheduling for the high school. So if we're going to, we talked about the opportunity to expose the students to CTE and possibly integrate them into the CTE programs. But one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about, is that really going to be a reality with the two schedules being so diverse? And if we were, are we going to get the biggest bang for the buck? And so we didn't want to oversell it and then not actually be able to deliver and then people come back and say, you kind of misled us, you told us it was going to happen. And we could still do a lot of those exposure programs in the summer like we've been doing. And so there are ways in which we could, you know, we could maybe find a way to bus them on other days that made sense to get them to the high school and actually plan an event versus hoping that we could get an event planned. So that pretty much ended the results of this exercise that we put together. And I felt that that was really important information to share with you, to help in your decision-making. And I think it helped me in terms of really being, trying to be objective about all the pros and cons because we had such a big list. And so sometimes you measure, sometimes you tend to measure the importance of one site, just about how many pros there are versus how many cons. But the problem is, some of the cons are big cons and they have to be weighted accordingly. So I, I felt like this was a great exercise. I don't know, Dr. Lever, if you wanted to comment on it at all? And I really want to thank Dr. Lever because he helped, we kind of worked it out together and talked it through and tried to come up with the best possible way to kind of discern some of this information that has been floating around for months.
Well, President Getz, members of board, Dr. Couch, good evening. Dr. Couch, you covered everything. The only thing that I want to add here is that this kind of scoring exercise is not like scoring a basketball game where it's kind of clear, either make the point, you don't make the point, a foul and not foul and so forth. Dr. Couch and I went back and forth many times about which site might be better. And we both, I think, changed our minds a number of times. And it made us realize that there's so much subjectivity in this kind of thing. You know, how do you think about something like this? It pointed to the need to the more objective process that we came up with. And bringing together 21 people generally with their own personal points of view, but in the process of the discussion itself, I think many of us learned where our own preferences lie. So discussion itself helped and that was part of the benefit, I think, of this kind of process. So I wouldn't rely too much on the point difference. Again, it's not a basketball game. But the fact that there was a point difference points, I think, to a preference. It sort of says the compass points in a certain direction. And if we ran this exercise again, we'd probably come up with different points, yet my guess is that we would, it would still point in the same direction. Because the points that were raised, for instance, about safety, for instance, about the access to the playing fields, about issues of collaboration, those would come up again and again, one way or another. And I think the points that we, the scoring would probably come out very much the same. You know, there would be differences, but I think it would still go in the same direction. So thank you for just giving me the opportunity to be involved and to speak about this.
Right. And I, I think for us is, you know, people have brought up, have you considered about the shared partnerships that you would have with the businesses and the organizations in Chestertown? And that absolutely played into the decision in terms of academics. I mean, we would absolutely still be able to walk to the Sultana. Now, there was an argument on the flip side, but you could bus them, true. But then you've got to plan the buses and then there's additional costs for that. And so there's a lot of those things that we had to go back and forth about. But I really felt good about trying to come up with an objective way because for me, I was a lot of information, a lot of people talking to me. One thing I will, and I know you brought this up, Mr. Rhodes, you know, my mind has never been made up, one way or the other. I've been trying to find the best way to look at all the information objectively and I had to get to the place that we're at now with regard to the cost, with regard to the information, pros and cons. And I feel like I'm, I'm better equipped to make that recommendation to the Board of Ed at the next board meeting. I, I do want you to have an opportunity to reflect on this information, to look detailed at the pros and cons, look how they weighted them. And I think our list was pretty exhaustive. I mean, we spent a lot of time just thinking about everything because I didn't want to leave any stone unturned in terms of, we didn't think of this or we didn't think of that. I was trying to think about every possibility. And I know I won't think of it all, but I was trying to think of every possibility that might impact this board, a future board, this superintendent, a future superintendent, whomever. I just wanted us to reflect and, and think about it because this is arguably the most important decision we will make as, as a school board. And I want to make sure that we've thought about everything. So that really concludes my presentation, but at this point, I would open it up for conversation.
Can I say a couple things? I think I have probably had the same experience that the other board members have in terms of flipping and flopping and trying to figure out, I mean, how I will vote in October, I'm pretty sure is not how I would have voted five or six months ago because new information has come that I honestly never thought about. I want to commend Dr. Couch and Dr. Lever and all the staff for continuing to push to try to really make the most informed decision we can. I know that is, because I was reading my, my old notes from the October meeting when it was said at a board, at a board meeting, a member of the public said, I know this is a done deal. Well, here we are, we're 11 months later and it's been, it's pretty clear, it hasn't been a done deal. The, the request was to put this off until the new board has been seated and now we've been seated now for nine months. So I'm, I'm really grateful and actually feel proud of the process that, that the community has undergone to try to really make, like I said, the, the most informed, best decision we can. It's impossible to make a decision that will please the entire county. It's impossible to make a decision that will have considered every single thing that could go into making this decision. But I do feel that when we make that decision, which it looks like we're probably going to do it in, in October, that we will have been armed with just the best information that we can. And it's not a fly-by-night, seat-of-our-pants decision. We will have thought long and hard and I'm really grateful that we've taken our time and, and through your leadership and Dr. Lever have brought us to this point. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to say something. Last year, I started coming to these meetings and my impression was, as you pointed out, that it might be a done deal because it all favored Wharton. And I kept going to meetings and I just, I talked to Dr. Lever about it a couple of times. It just sort of, it sounded like it was pressing towards Wharton. And I'm really happy that you put this, Dr. Couch, you put this proposal together because it really tells me that you did your homework. And I feel that having this explained to us is a lot important than in the beginning when we just had all these talks. I remember I went to a meeting early last year, I wasn't even on the board, and they were talking about it, two or three people were up in front, and I said something about Chestertown, and they said, we don't want it, Chestertown's going to go to Wharton. I was like, okay, you know, that's the impression I got from some people. So I'm, I'm really proud that you have pulled this together and done, I think you've done a great job with all these points you put together. I just, thank you very much.
Yeah, I wanted to say something similar also. Thank you for the, to both of you and for the group that you gathered together and the thoughtfulness that went into this. And I think, I think these weighted topics are so valuable and I think they should be shared with the community. And if we could get them on the KCMS project page on the website, I think that that would, showing that difference between the 101 for Chestertown versus 15 for Wharton.
Again, it's not, it's not a game.
Yeah, exactly. It's not, it, but it, but it is eye-opening.
Yeah. It was eye-opening for all of us.
Yeah. But I also, I mean, you know, the, the data person in me also thinks, what a great template you've created now for when we are ready to build our new high school.
Okay, there you go.
So, but thank you for all your work.
Just a question. Did, did I see somewhere that the Town, Chestertown has a, has a poll or something on, on one of their websites or something that?
The Town website.
Okay. Do we know?
We don't, I, I thought David might be here tonight, David Foster might be here tonight, but maybe he'll come to the, the next meeting.
I saw him on Saturday and one of the things that we briefly chatted about, I know we followed up with an email about trying to assemble a meeting in Chestertown with some of the businesses and organizations because, you know, maybe we hadn't really considered the value of the Sultana and the Washington College. And I think what this says is, we have, and it is very important to us, and we've reflected that in, in this overall objective way of looking at it. And, and one of the things I do want to say is that we have spent more time, and I, and I stand by this, we have spent more time on really taking our time, if you will, and thinking heavily in terms of where analyzing all the data. Obviously, we had to do a feasibility study in order to move forward with demolition of the existing middle school, you know, if that's the way we go. So we had to do the, the feasibility study. But I mean, when we had the community listening center, sessions, you know, we had a lot of time that we spent, you know, sharing all of our data along the way, much more than my colleagues have done in any other community looking at building a new school. I, I stand by the fact that we have spent more time, more community engagement, more reflection, adding more options, you know, just to really think this thing through. And I think for me, the reason why that was so important is because this is a big deal for this small community. And I wanted to make sure that we got it right. No matter what we did, I wanted, not that, I mean, somebody along the way may come back and say, we made a stupid decision. I mean, I'm sure that'll happen because there will be, you know, at least 30% of the population will say, that is the dumbest decision you've ever made. So, I mean, I know we can't please everybody, but I was really wanting to get this right and to make sure that we did the best for our kids, that we could walk away saying, we did our homework and we really gave it a lot of forethought and we tried to think about the future. Because this may be our last shot at building a, a new school for a very long time. And so I wanted to make sure that we got it right. And so where I kept a lot of my opinions close to my chest, I've been thinking about this, I've been trying to engage the community, engage our principals, engage our administrators and make sure that, you know, we just got it right. So.
Can, can we talk also about the next steps in the process? Because just, just because the board votes on it doesn't make it a done deal. So can we talk about what the next steps are? Oh, I'm sorry, Eritho, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I did. I, I just wanted to say that I also wanted to give thanks to everybody that has put such an effort in to try to, to come to, to really put on the table everything that we have to consider or should consider in order for us to make a good decision. And I truly appreciate that because we can't just make this decision because of how that the adults or other people feel about it because of the town and different things. I, for me, it's just about the children. It's about the students. And, and that's the most important thing because when we build this new school, no matter where it's at or how it looks, what's going on on the inside is really what is the main consideration, is what we should be considering more than anything and what our children are going to get out of it, you know, year after year after year, you know? And I really appreciate everybody coming know, year after year after year, you know. And I really appreciate everybody coming out. To me, I guess we have woke up the community to now realize that there is a school, you know. I know that the middle school itself has been there for years, but for some reason, I think somehow it may have became invisible sometime or another, you know. And so now everybody's woke, and I hope they stay woke, you know, and don't take another nap after it's built. It's where you may want it to be. The children need you, the community, we need the community to come out and support, just like we need, we need everybody to be concerned. And it's one other thing I want to say, and that is, it might be two. But it's that, as I was sitting here and I'm listening to what were the comments and different things, the way that everything has been done and it was planned out and, you know, how that, it was, everything, it took an effort, and it took an effort from the community, the commissioners, the board, the parents, you know, everybody had to come together. And then some outside resources even that came in to help to make this possible, is the same way I feel like we need to come together so that other things that is going on in our school system can be undone and, you know, and we can do better with it. If we just could come together and really show our concern. Because the thing is, is that a lot of times, it just takes time. And I know we want it one and done, we want everything to be quick and in a hurry, but many times, it takes time to really figure it out because it takes different perspectives and different things like that to really make the better choices. And I feel like that here, we have considered all kinds of, you know, everybody's opinion, and we've gotten, you know, people who are skilled in it, and they have came in and they've told us what's best, and they've analyzed this and analyzed that. And we've taken the time to allow them to do that so that we can make the better choice, you know. And I truly appreciate that. But we need it also in our, to figure out how to make our educational system work better. And one of the ways that we'll do that is if we all come together, like we used to in the older days, the parents, the community, and everybody's, you know, come together and show your concern and, you know, just wake up to the fact, parents, wake up to the fact that you have children, you know. And, you know, I'm just saying, we just all need to wake up and remember who is important in this whole situation. So, you know, because we will do a lot of bickering amongst ourselves, but we've already graduated. But these children are still here, you know, and they need to come out. And they're going to be the next people. When we can't do anything, they'll be the next ones that's going to stand in the gap and fill our shoes, we hope.
So, next steps. Next steps are twofold. We have engaged district, our district delegation, District 36 delegation to carry a bill for us to get more state funding to build the school. And I think we heard from the commissioners that if we can get to a place where the state will contribute more, because right now it's 50-50, that they gave their commitment that we could move forward with this project. So that is our, obviously, one of our big things that we're going to be working on this legislative session. We're, obviously, shared this information, we'll talk about it at our retreat, which will be this month, and Mr. Getz will talk about that during board discussion. But we can talk about it some more at our board retreat, but I will come forward and make a recommendation in October for the single site that we will build this new school. That, in the meantime, we are working on our CIP plan, which is our capital improvement plan that has to be submitted to the IAC. And I will likely go forward and ask for the commissioners to write us a letter of support in that, and they can make it contingent upon getting more funding from the state. So it's not like they're going to agree to do it and then, you know, and then, so, obviously, they have funding issues, and we understand that. And I don't think that that's going to be a problem with the IAC. Everybody understands that we have to move forward. And I think we heard from the commissioners that they support the project, and that's all we need, is a letter of support, which they've not indicated that they would not provide to us. And, but we're going to have to be in the process of putting together the CIP plan through us trying to navigate to that final decision. So I don't know if you want to share kind of where we're going to be.
What's the deadline for submitting?
We're going to tell you.
Okay.
That is the complication.
That is a little bit of a complication.
The applications are due on October 4th, and you're meeting on October 9th.
We're okay.
So I think that, Dr. Couch and I have talked about this, and I think that if there's a cover letter that indicates that the board is fully informed and that the decision will be taken, it's really just a few days later. And then hopefully, I mean, if your decision is made, inform the IAC the next day, send a letter up, and I hope that will not be a kind of administrative barrier. You'd be requesting planning approval, and you will be requesting because it's now an eligible expense, you will be requesting some funding to support the planning, the design. And if that's approved by the IAC, you'll get an early indication about that, I hope, so that you might be able to start the selection process, say, in the winter of 2024, sometimes, say, February, March, make a decision sometime in the spring, and then when the funding is actually released, be able to let the architects go ahead.
And that would be starting on design.
Yep.
And, of course, it's all contingent. There's a lot of moving parts that have to all come together for that one. So what, you know, it would be nice to get some concurrence from the board for us to move forward with that, with that plan in mind, that we would put together the CIP, go ahead and put a letter in place that we will take action at the October 9th meeting, but you all give us direction to go ahead and start working on the plan. We can submit it by the due date, get the letter from the county commissioners, move forward, and then let's work it hard during this legislative session so that we can see if we can get additional funding.
I certainly don't want to slow down the process, but will there be an opportunity for the potential of multiple designs being proposed?
No.
Or, okay.
No. No. I mean, we have to, go ahead.
Well, the design process itself, I think Dr. Couch said it, that what you have in front of you is a concept.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So the design process itself, it could be the architects, it'll be a very open, competitive process. So the architects who have done the feasibility study, I'm sure they're going to want to compete. They're not necessarily the ones who are going to get the job. Whoever gets the job will have to take a really fresh look at this. So the design could come out quite different.
But we would not have multiple to bring you and say, okay, which one do you like or do you favor first? I mean, when we hire and hire the architectural firm to do the design, then we will be bringing it forward at different intervals to share with you what we've got, but.
But there wouldn't be multiple.
No, there will not be multiple options.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any fat building to these costs, or, you know, do they generally go up or do they go down? In the cost of the building, $55 million, does it generally go up or does it go?
The longer we wait.
I'm not talking about, I know waiting, but I'm just saying, usually on a big project like this.
It only goes up.
So we can talk maybe $60 million?
Oh, it could. And it depends on construction cost escalation, which is outside of our control. The only time we've seen costs go down is when we had the huge recession in 2008.
Okay.
So, and we don't want that, you know, the pain that came with that. So generally, we've seen construction cost escalation before COVID at about 4% per year, pretty regularly. These days, it's much harder to predict. It went up to as high as 15% to 20% during the COVID period. Now it seems to be stabilizing at somewhere above 6%. And those are the figures that we've been using. And the architects of the construction estimators have been using figures about that range. But there's so many unknowns. And that's one of the reasons, is one of the most important reasons why we want to increase the state funding, is to create a cushion on the local side to overcome. While, if that happens, there are going to be unforeseen conditions, there are on every project, soils and so forth. But construction cost escalation is the single biggest unknown condition that we might face. We just don't know what's going to happen. War in Ukraine, crises elsewhere, all of these affect construction costs. So having a cushion is extremely important.
Thank you.
So that's next steps.
Thank you.
So, do we have concurrence from the board for us to move forward with submitting the CIP with that letter, saying that, you know, we would let the IAC know what, which location we decide in October? I mean, I don't see any problem with that, but if you see a problem with that, you need to tell me now.
So the expectation is you'll make a recommendation to us in October, and the expectation is we will take our vote then?
Yes. And I definitely want to thank Dr. Lever. He's been an incredible consultant through this entire process, and I really feel like we, we really discerned some valuable information for everybody through the process. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Well, we'll move on to the next topic, which is board discussion. Thank you, Dr. Lever. Appreciate it. Ms. Messick, would you like to go first? Great. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a crazy month as the start of the new school here and the end of summer. I am a senior this year, and so I began my senior year this week, and it's been really great. I can agree that the schools have been really exciting. I feel like it's been a really great start, and thank you to the administration at the high school. It's been really great. And so today, I started my teaching academy internship at Rock Hall Elementary School, and I wanted to thank you for that opportunity. It's been really great. Well, today was really great, and I'm really excited to learn a lot about the teacher perspective and experience this opportunity. I also helped out at the high school open house, along with the first day for freshmen, both went wonderfully, and I'm really hopeful for this year, and I really enjoyed this freshman class. I also volunteered to help with the Kent County Purple color run, which was really great. I apologize if I hit you in the face with the green dye, but it was for a good cause. It was really fun, and it's my second year, and I'm really happy to support the county. The book plate also came to the high school for a book sale, and I want to thank them along with the literary department at the high school. It was a really great opportunity, and I was really excited to see it. I bought a lot of books, and I love that collaboration. So for the calendar of events, tomorrow's an early dismissal at all of the schools. The Kent County High School has a PTSA tomorrow evening, a PTSA meeting tomorrow evening. Tomorrow is the first Kent County field hockey game at home. Please come out and support our teams. As the Kent County Field Hockey Manager, I will be there, and I will be the number one supporter. It's amazing. And the Kent County Girl Soccer Team also has a game September 14th. The middle school begins their Echo Hill trip on September 18th to the 22nd, which I really, that's a great experience for these sixth graders. I loved it my sixth grade year, and I'm really excited to see them continue that. The Kent County Evening School begins September 18th. September 20th, Galena has the fourth grade Sultana Education Field Trip. Garnet on September 21st has their back-to-school night, along with a golf tournament September 21st at the high school, at the country club. The Fall Student Picture Day is September 22nd. Kent County Middle School Back-to-School Day is September 26th. The Kent County High School Back-to-School Day is September 27th. October 27th is the homecoming game, Kent County High School Homecoming Game. And then that Saturday, October 28th, is the homecoming dance, which is really exciting. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Manny. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to mix it up a little bit rather than throwing Ms. Dorsey out there, right out of the gate. We'll start with Mr. Rhodes, if you don't mind, sir.
Sure.
Go right ahead. That'd be great. We're going to mix it up.
All I can say is I'm glad that last meeting is over. This is a new meeting. I'm really enjoying it. So I, like in life and school, we will fall, get back up, and move forward. This is the American way. So I have a few things. I was going to read some stories, but I basically wanted to start on the three events that I attended recently. On the 24th, I attended with my wife at Menary's Dream Alliance, a Right to Read documentary. A few members, I think some of them are here from the KPS staff, were there. A few of the highlights. Our reading statistics for third grade is down. Do we have a political will to make change? How do we teach to read? They suggested a bottom-up approach. Start with pieces. And at that discussion, it basically said, we have no time to wait. Some school districts are finding out that students are suing because they did not learn. The overall consensus within the audience members is that something needs to change. So, more facts. In the Wall Street Journal recently, on August 18th, more states threaten to hold back third graders who struggle to read. Tennessee, Michigan, and North Carolina are among at least 16 states that have tried to take the years and use reading tests and laws requiring students to repeat third grade. I'm not saying that should happen here, but it's happening. And I want our kids, I want our children to learn to read, and I know some aren't because I've heard of stories. So please, we need the board, we need to work on this. Okay, the next, on the 22nd, I attended along with fellow board members, the all-staff back-to-school event. KCS staff are recognized for their years of service. Then we had a presentation by a keynote speaker, this gentleman right here, Charlie Applestein. Now, I haven't had a chance to read his whole book, but this guy was really motivational. And I don't know who, did you get him, Dr. Couch?
The staff, the administrative staff.
This guy was great. It was, I don't know if anyone stayed for that part of it. Then the last thing, on August 27th, I again with my wife attended Menary's Dream Alliance Back-to-School Bash. During three to four hours, over 100 families came through for donated backpacks, school supplies, and haircuts. And yes, I do want change. I would like to see KCPs break away. We have a knowledgeable superintendent, competent school board, and staff throughout these five schools. We can do it. Let's work together. As Mrs. Dorsey said, we need to get together and make this happen. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Ms. McGee.
Let's see. Piggybacking on how Mr. Getz started this meeting, today is September 11th, and I just want people to remember that two of our own died. Jared Thompson, it's been 20 years, it's hard to believe, September 7th, it was 20 years when he died. Jared was the president of the class of 1993, and he was the captain of the football team. And he died September 7th, 2003, and five months later, Nick Spry, who had just gotten out of high school, died. He'd only been in Iraq for a month, and he was just 19. And it's hard to believe that in that same year, fortunately Travis Manning, who suffered second and third degree burns, over 40% of his body survived. And Travis's daughter graduated in the class of 2023 from Kent County High School. So 20 years is a long time, but for people of a certain age, and I am of that age now, and we have people in our, that are still in our staff, we knew those kids when they were coming up through our school system. So I don't ever want them to be forgotten, and they have names. So I need for you guys to remember them. On to lighter subject, at the back-to-school event, yeah, the most exciting thing was that Ms. McGee getting the Teacher of the Year, getting her new car, but also Ginny Wallace was celebrating 50, half of a century, working for Kent County Public Schools, which is some sort of insane milestone. So, you know, I want to recognize that. Again, I'm really proud of us. When I say us, I mean Kent County Public Schools. I mean, the community sort of plotting through getting, making the best decision we can on the middle school. Because as, it's probably the biggest construction project that Kent County will have ever undertaken, and as somebody else said, every kid that attends Kent County Public Schools will go through that building. That is the only, the reality is, it's the only middle school we have. And I just want to ask, I know that there's nothing to be done tonight, or might be nothing we can do, period. But a couple of months ago, there was a discussion. But a couple of months ago, there was a discussion about kids crossing at Galena Elementary School and if there was anything we could do to provide for their safety. And I happened to be stuck at the, the stop sign the other day out there at the high school on 297 and 298. And there's a difference between an elementary school kid and a high school kid, but I was standing there and I watched a high school kid who had their earbuds in and were no more paying attention to what was going on than the man in the mood and they walked right across. I've stopped there, but there was a vehicle coming who paid no attention to what was going on. I had a stop sign, but 297 does not have a stop sign and I was just almost worried that that's an accident waiting to happen. I didn't know if there was anything we could do. I mean, in Chestertown, the town owns the road in front of Garnet Elementary School and they have a crossing guard.
It's a state road. I've reached out to them. I've reached out to them years ago.
Yeah, I know. And, and Rock Hall is a town road and I know they're, they're state roads. It's just somehow offer better vigilance. I don't know what we can do just to protect our kids.
We've sent letters to the highway department. We've asked our delegation to get involved in contacting the highway department. The best we get back is, thank you for your letter and we will give it some consideration. And I think since I've been here as superintendent, I've sent, we've sent three letters. And we got the delegation involved last year when we sent the last letter and we still have not received any positive response. I don't know what else we can do.
I got a light replaced when I sent them a couple of emails about that, but I also kind of asked them for more school crossing signs and to actually paint the crosswalk.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, maybe we could do that. Again, it's a state road, I get it.
When it's daylight savings time, I mean, that's, I live in Morton's, so I drive by there and kids are walking in the dark across the street to get to the high school and it's, it's scary. So.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey.
I just want to say that for those who are returning, the teachers, the staff, we let you know that we appreciate you. And, and for those who are new, who've come to Al County to educate, help to educate our children, we appreciate you as well. And we look forward to the success, a successful year. And I just thank you all for tolerating me and having me and I definitely look forward to the success that we will all have together on this year. And, and I say that from my heart because I hope and pray that it's a successful year for all of us. I know we have a lot that we have to look forward to, that a lot of things on the table. I know we had a lot to get to right here with the budget and everything and I know it hasn't been good for everybody. It was an experience for me just being, sitting on this side of the table, looking at what we really have in front of us and what to deal with. I, I think that everyone that had a hand in it did the best they could to, to do the best that we could for the kids. And we all hate to see what, what we have to cut in different things because we need everything, because we want to give them everything that we have that's available. But I do thank God for what's left and what we can, we have now before us, you know, to give to our kids and we just want to make the best of it. I guess I'm thinking that when a hand is dealt, we don't always get the best hand in the card table, but if you don't give up and you play it, you can play it and still win. So, you know, that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
I wanted to say that I hope that everyone's had a wonderful start to the new school year and especially I'm grateful to Principal Hemstetter at Kent County High School and Principal Buckle at Kent County Middle School for all they've done already to make my children and all the students there feel welcome. So thank you. And I look forward to strengthening our relationships. I also attended the kickoff event and thought that Charlie Applestein was fantastic. I thought he was very engaging and I'm not a teacher or coach, but I found lots of things applicable to parenting that I was happy to take those home with me. And following along with the community impairment, parent involvement theme, I wanted to say I'm also looking forward to my first Kent County High School PTSA meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM in the media center. And if you have not already, please check with your school principal to find out how to join your PTA. And here are five reasons to join the PTA. Joining benefits your child. Research shows that children perform better when parents are involved both at home and at school. Get connected. There is no better way to know what's happening at school. Tap into a network. PTA connects you to other parents and teachers through meetings, events, and communications, helping to build a sense of community. Be a role model. By becoming a PTA member, you'll be demonstrating to your child the importance you place on education. Witness improvement. By getting involved in PTA, you'll be a part of the solution, helping to make positive changes. And I also wanted to use some of my time to, to shine a light on some challenges that some of our students may be facing that, that we may not always be aware of. And a survey completed by the Trevor Project shows that 41% of LGBTQ young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. That number is staggering to me. These young people aren't considering suicide because of who they are, but because of how they are being treated. According to the CDC, when schools implement supportive policies and practices for LGBT, LGBTQ youth, all students experience less emotional distress, less violence and harassment, and fewer suicidal thoughts and behaviors. It is our job as parents to protect our children and prepare them for the world. But it's also our job to make sure that they have the opportunity to become a part of the world. What does the statistic 41% of LGBTQ youth look like here in Kent County? Is it 10 kids? Is it 20 kids? Is it 30 kids? It is our job to make sure that all students in Kent County Public Schools are respected, valued, and welcome. Addressing the need for a supportive and affirming environment goes hand in hand with addressing the need for academic achievement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I, I will just comment also on the kickoff meeting and I'll take a little bit of a different spin on it. When I had the, actually, the pleasure to stand up front when we were awarding the service awards, to look out into the group, it was fascinating to me to see all of the schools sitting with each other and the, the joy and the cheering and the teamwork. I was actually, I don't want to say shocked, but I was pleasantly surprised at the unity that we were already seeing in the schools and the pride that the schools had with each other and all of the staff that were there. That was amazing. I think the middle school had matching shirts and, and just to see people rooting for each other and, you know, it was, it was really cool to see. So it really speaks to, to our administration, our staff, and the building, you know, the support staff that are out there, you know, managing a team myself and actually seeing that, it was, it was pretty motivating to see everyone gelate that with a little competition as well. I will say that I would love at some point to know what the number of total services in total school system with all employees, because if it's not well over thousands of years, I would be shocked. Because we literally sat there for what seemed to be five hours giving service awards out to everyone and it just speaks to the commitment that so many people have to the students of Kent County as well as this place that we call home, our little fishbowl in the universe. So it, it's really fascinating to see and my hats are off to the administration, to the teachers, to the staff, to everyone that make, that makes it work. It's pretty fascinating. So thank you for all of that. Also, you know, Maddie, to see the, the social media posts of students and smiling and being involved already and we're a week and a couple of days in. And to see all of the fundraising posts that are out there for all of the sports teams and band and everything and everyone, I would just ask that if you're not tagged on any of those social media posts, please, please follow and please support them. It's really easy to get a car wash when you're going to Redners on a Saturday morning to get groceries. It's pretty cool and the kids are happy to do it and stuff. Sometimes, just sometimes they'll even squirt you with water. So it actually works out pretty well. On the business side of things, board retreat, I just wanted to talk to, talk to the board. As you know, and we've talked about it the last time and I'll be announcing the board retreat is September 23rd. We are going to, their, their, the meeting itself will be broken down to do four segments. Three of the segments have already been predetermined. One of the segments will be annual goals for the superintendent. The second segment will be the board handbook. The third segment will be the Kent County Middle School. The fourth segment will be determined by our facilitator by end of week this week. So we'll know basically on all the feedback that we had to provide to the facilitator. I'll be getting the facilitator plan, so we'll know that. But my ask for the group is, the facilitator can make it and it will be here in this building at 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 23rd. My ask is, and what the plan was, was to go to lunch, have lunch, and then potentially talk about the middle school after lunch and maybe go an hour or so. But my question is, we can have the middle school discussion if you would like to start earlier. So start at 8:00 and then our facilitator will come in and then handle, you know, some of the other, the other three topics. So I'm just asking what your choice is. Do you want to start at 8:00 on the day of the retreat or 9:00? I'm good either way.
How about 7:00?
We can start at 7:00 if you would.
Hold up. I like the idea of having that conversation before we start with the facilitator. I think, I think it's good. So I'm, I'm happy with 8:00. If we start early or do we get out early?
Oh, we could. Well, so, so what we would do is we would have the, the portion that was scheduled or going to be had after lunch would, would have been the middle school. If we have our conversation right out the gate without the facilitator, then we're not going to necessarily need to, unless you would, unless the group would like to stay.
No, I don't.
But I don't think that we would need to. But, but I mean, we certainly, we've held our own retreats where we facilitated. So if you would, if you would like, we could start at 8:00 and that would be okay.
That's great.
Okay. That'll be, that'll be fantastic then. So why don't we, why don't we plan, we'll start at 8:00. The first topic we'll knock out is, that sounds terrible, but the first topic that we'll talk about is Kent County Middle School project. And then the facilitator will be here and then we'll go through the rest of the, the rest of the topics from there.
Are we still at 8:01? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, I would say 8:01, but it would probably, you know, end sooner if we could get a good hour in on the middle school.
And just a reminder that it's open to the public, but not open for?
Participation.
Correct. They can observe.
Yep. Okay, so then why don't we, we'll go at 8:00 then?
That's great.
Okay. And what I'll do is, as I get the facilitator's plan out, we also will have notification to the public by end of week and then we'll also make sure we outline that and we go from there. Okay, thanks, everyone. That's all I have for board discussion. I appreciate it. Okay, we'll move into education services. The first item on the agenda in this portion of the agenda is preliminary student enrollment count. I see Dr. Walker coming forward.
Good evening, President Getz and Dr. Couch and respective board members. Tonight I bring to you just for information the Kent County Public Schools preliminary enrollment report. And as of 8:00 this morning, we had a decrease of 16 students compared to September 30th of 2022. The pre-K through fifth grade enrollment was up by one student. The sixth grade through eighth enrollment was down by seven students and the high school enrollment was down by 10 students. So that's where, you know, the net balance is a decrease of 16 students. We had 10 students enrolled in the Kent Blended Learning Academy and we have about 138 homeschool students. So the Student Services Department will encourage some of those homeschool students to re-enroll and possibly be part of the KBLA. So that will help some with the attendance. On the next slide, you will see the current enrollment for each school and also by grade level compared to the official September 30th count for last year and how the loss of 16 students was calculated. Of course, enrollment is fluid, so I will come back next month with an official September 30th count for you, which we can compare September 30th this year with September 30th last year. It will be more official.
Yeah, and I will note, as we've seen in previous years, this is, I know, losing 16 kids is not great, but I will tell you, we've suffered a great many losses that are, that are much greater than this in previous years. So we all know that typically in September, we see more students coming in. Of course, we see some students going out and we don't always disenroll the secondary students until we get further on, like some of them are just no-shows and we haven't really disenrolled them. So this number could change, it could get worse, but it could obviously get better. And the thing to note is when we're just down 16 students, it is, it is, that's not bad news.
And, and that matches up with what we were anticipating as, as the, the roll-up of, of students, because we know that the student population is getting sort of smaller and smaller and smaller. So that first side, slide said we were anticipating less, 16 less students anyways through the rolling up of students. Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't think that's, I don't think necessarily that was factored in.
Did I look at it the wrong way?
So wouldn't, I mean, the, the enrollment data that we use for this year is based on September of last year, right? So didn't we already know that we were going to have 16? I mean, isn't that a number that?
You know, we, it wasn't really analyzed. I mean, if you look at the numbers from, I mean, you don't see last year's numbers in pre-K, K1, 2. So if you want us to compare by grade level, we can bring that to you next time.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But I don't, I don't know, this data does not provide you with that information. So.
And then are they for the new, I guess it's not even Moe calculator, are they still using the best of multiple years or are they going by true enrollment numbers?
It's the average, the three-year average or current enrollment, whichever one is greater.
Okay.
When you come back next month with more, you know, the end of September, whatever, I'd be curious just to see how the 138 homeschool students compares to previous numbers for homeschool students.
Okay.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and we, I might say that we've seen that number increase, we saw that number increase when we experienced the pandemic.
Yeah, I get that. It just seems like, it seems like a lot.
Yeah. In some cases, that has not diminished over time.
Do we, do we offer, like the, the high school has an academy program, I guess it's kind of a hybrid where we have homeschool kids that can.
The Kent County Blended Learning Academy.
The Blended Learning, does that also work for middle school?
Yes.
Okay. And, and if they're in that academy for middle school, are they also able to participate in middle school athletics?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any, any additional questions? Okay, this was for information only.
Thank you, Dr. Walker.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the American Sign Language curriculum. And Ms. Hemstetter is coming forward.
Should be able to say happy birthday. Didn't you say it was her birthday?
Yeah, it is her birthday today. It is her birthday today, if you want to say something.
Which, by the way, if I could interrupt, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
It runs through the school system, so.
I wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
I know.
County Public School Board meeting, so.
Thank you for sharing your birthday with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Couch, President Getz, and members of the board. So I want to just say again, thank you for approving the American Sign Language as a second option for the world language graduation requirement. It seems to be going very well and our students are very excited. So the next step in this process is obtain an approval for the materials and the curriculum. So what we did, we were able to reach out, look at the standards and reach out to several schools and kind of do some research and right now, and we needed to look at the ACTFL standards, which are the American Council on Teaching a Foreign Language. So American Sign Language also falls under the ACTFL, which is the same standards that we use for our Spanish curriculum and any other world languages that we have. So based on that, we were, what we're recommending and the call summary is attached, is the Signing Naturally series. It's the most popular series and many of, comes out of California and a lot of higher education universities use the Sign and Naturally series. So we're excited by what it provides. It provides some teacher train-ins, it provides videos, teacher materials, also, also the assessments that go along with that. It also corresponds to the five C goals, which we want for communication, also teaching the culture, the deaf culture and the language, making those connections, comparisons, and also the communities of the deaf community. So right now, we currently have. So right now, we currently have three classes, ASL 1, which are being taught in the fall semester. Moving into the spring semester, we will offer two ASL 1 classes, and then we have students that are already signed up for the ASL 2. So some of our students have taken ASL 1 now, and they will be taking the ASL 2 in the spring. So we're asking for approval of the curriculum that is attached, based on the general information that you see there. We are asking for 130 students, which is the interactive online student materials, which is the amount of students that we will currently have in the year-long program with the six different classes or the five different classes, and then that ASL 2 class, which will be 25 students for the interactive online student materials. What the company, and we've been going round and round with the company, I don't know if you want to speak.
Can I just jump in and add to it?
Sure.
So as you know, it's unusual for us to come to you with a textbook request for approval. So typically, we bring it for information only, and one of the requests we have tonight is for your consideration of fast-tracking this because of the need at the school level to get the textbook in the hands of students. So I was just joining Ms. Hempstead for a moment to request that we would consider moving this directly to approval tonight for the ASL class.
Just, and the reason why that's important is because according to your policies and procedures, it takes two months for textbook adoption. So we're asking that you waive your policies and procedures so that we can fast-track this and then adopt the textbook so we can move forward with the curriculum and the textbook purchase.
Okay. The Kent County High School Administration is recommending adoption of the recommended Kent County High School textbook pending budget. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to fast-track the adoption of the textbook pending budget.
We have a motion by Ms. Solomon. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments, questions?
I just want to say that my kid is in the ASL class, and it's been wonderful, and I tell you, one of the greatest things is not just learning the language, but learning about deaf culture. I think it's really important, and I think it's giving a, a much more human 360 view of, of the language, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Hearing no other comments, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm for it.
Okay. I hear no opposition. I hear all ayes. The motion passes as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Do we have any old cupcakes in the... Maybe a candle? Mr. Porter, you've got every tool possible. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the MCAP update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Getz, Dr. Couch, members of the board. Tonight, I'm joined by my team, Amelia, and in the audience, we also have Michelle Serino, who oversees our English Language Arts program, as well as Nicole Boyce, our coordinator for mathematics. And tonight, we present to you the information we have so far with our, our state testing, the results at the local level. Just want to share that not everything has been released publicly, so what we share with you tonight is what we are permitted to share at this point in time. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amelia, and she'll start off with the first little piece.
Do I, I use this correct? Yes, I remember. Okay. So the following data has been provided to Kent County Public Schools by MSD and specifically using the Pearson Platform for State Testing. It is, the specific school leader, school data is still embargoed at this time by MSD, so we can't share that at this time. The Maryland State Report Card will publish school-level MCAP data assessments in the very near future, so as soon as we have that information, we'll make sure we push out that MD Report Card link. All percentages in this presentation have been rounded so that we can kind of protect student data, but also give you an overall number of what to expect. Just a reminder, the MCAP scoring level descriptors, the performance level descriptors have not changed over the past year. It is still like, it is still a 1 to 4 level descriptor, so specifically, the level 3s and level 4s are proficient scores, level 4 being a distinguished learner, level 3 being a proficient learner. And then our level 1s and 2s are developing and beginning level learners as well.
So we'd like to start off with the first graph, English Language Arts grades 3 through 8, and this graph shows how all the counties performed on last year's ELA MCAP assessment. The overall state average was 47%, and 8, Kent County, our district, was eight percentage points away from the state average. As you can see on the slide, the scores varied from a low of 25% in Baltimore City, the highest scores in Worcester County, 68%. Last year, Kent County scored 35% and was nine percentage points away from the state. This year, we did have an overall increase in proficiency, which we'll go into in just a moment, and we did inch our way a little closer to the state average. This next slide gives a view of exactly that. So once again, we're looking English Language Arts, grades 3 through 8, and this shows how all the counties performed and whether or not they increased proficiency from the previous year for grades 3 through 8. This slide is probably one of the greatest celebrations we have to share tonight because it does show an average increase for Kent County. The state average was 2.9, and our district improved in English Language Arts, teaching students how to read by grade 3 and beyond, by 4.3 percentage points.
And I just want to stop there for a moment because I, I think that's important because this was highlighted at the State Board of Ed meeting, that all the, the school systems that saw a greater increase than the state were, the, the state superintendent felt compelled to show that, those data to the State Board of Ed, and we were happy to see that one of the things that we talked about is trying to double the amount of proficiency that we experienced or that the state was expecting for growth, and we nearly doubled that. So that shows the dedication of our staff and our focus and attention to English Language Art and, and literacy.
Student performance in ELA grade 10 has always been a point of pride for the district, and this graph shows how all counties performed on the English 10 MCAP assessment. The state average was 54%, and this past year, Kent County was 5% above the state average. Last year, our students scored overall at 58% proficiency. As you know, the area that remains in the spotlight, not only for the state of Maryland, but specifically for Kent County Public Schools, is the area of mathematics. So this slide shows the overall performance for students in grades 3 through 8. Once again, this is a combined performance, and you'll see that in 2021, Kent County was 14% proficient and eight percentage points away from the state, and this year, we have decreased that performance to, we are now 10 percentage points away from the state average. 15% overall proficiency, 10 points away, 10 percentage points away from the state average for grades 3 through 8.
So what I would just clarify, because I think, just to make sure, because I'm not sure it came out just right, but we didn't decrease proficiency, we increased proficiency but decreased the, the percentage points away from the state.
From the state. And this slide, thank you, Dr. Couch, because this slide does show that it was almost one percentage point increase from the previous year.
Right.
So overall, performance went up slightly, not statistically significant, but it did go up from the previous year. The Algebra 1 assessment, you can see in the red square that there were several districts in the exact position that we are, which is really performing at a very low level in percent proficiency in the area of Algebra 1. The MCAP 21, 22 results, we were 15 percentage points proficient and, I'm sorry, we were 15% proficient and nine points away from the state, and this year, we are 10 points away from the state average. What's interesting as you look at this slide, because this is one, again, I think sometimes it can be overwhelming when you're looking at so many different districts and the overall performance, but I want you to think about the range of these numbers. If we lifted Howard County 38 away from this graph, the range of the overall percentage is basically 20 points. You're from 7% to 27%. So you're not talking about a very high performance anywhere in the state of Maryland. It is an area, which you're going to hear about some of our strategies that we're taking on in partnership with not only our local leadership in mathematics, but the state leadership as well, and the plan that we're excited to have to address some of these challenges, particularly how our administrators are stepping up to really take some brave steps in making some important changes to change the trajectory in, in math.
So, an important indicator in our state testing scoring is students are given a raw overall scaled score, and just to kind of, this is some of the work that we've done with our, with our administrators, is looking at some of these scaled points. So just understanding where these points are and how each student did at an administrative and leadership level will really help us make some future changes in our school systems. So understanding that there's a cutoff score for proficiency of 750 will really help us identify some of our students that are on the cusp, which you'll see in a couple of other slides. So students, just an important note in this, though, students scoring of four are distinguished of three, and, sorry, four and three of proficient. Those cut-off scores at the higher level vary slightly, but that cutoff score of 750 remains the same. So as we talk about some of these scores later on, some of these on-the-cusp students, it's important to remember that cutoff score of 750 as we move forward.
With the new state assessment, one of the things that we find incredibly helpful is just the rich data that the, that the assessment provides, and how we're able to use that information to really begin to develop personal plans at the student level. So last year, we shared with you a term that Mr. Shodri introduced, the students on the cusp. What that means is they are only questions away on an assessment from reaching proficiency. Sometimes you're talking about two to three questions. If they could achieve two to three questions and get those questions right, they could move from what would be a cut score of a 2, not proficient, bump them over to the 3 proficient. This is a very busy slide. On the left-hand side of this slide, you'll see how our students are performing this past year. And again, on the right-hand side, we wanted to give you all of this information. On the right-hand side is how they performed last year, and on the left-hand side is the current year. If we are able to move the students that are on the cusp, we would actually be above the state average in every grade. So again, looking at this chart, you'll see the grade level, next to it, the percent proficient in ELA, and then in math in blue. Next to that, the actual number of students in a small school system, that's important to realize, just that small number that we're talking about. In many classes, it's a class size. One small number of students could bump us over and bring us way above the state average. So again, I think as those of us that are involved in teaching and planning and working with those individual students, this gives us great hope that we're on the right path to really moving in the right direction to help achieve those rigorous goals. The one thing that Amelia just pointed out at the bottom of the slide, five points can be attained by correctly answering the 1 to 3, I think I did mention the 1 to 3 questions, right? It's just saying that that would make all the difference in the world. Thank you. We like to support each other when we're... A lot of information to share. This slide shows the trends again, but keep in mind that 2019, I'm sure you feel like we're a broken record up here sometimes, that was a different assessment. So you can't, it's not comparing apples to apples when you look at 2019 to 2022 and 2023, but it is good for us just overall to see, are we moving in the right direction? And one thing you'll notice here is that with the three years' worth of data, the 2019 chart shows the park data, 22 shows the MCAP data for the first time, and then 23 shows last year's data. The areas that we've highlighted in purple, we're excited to share that this is showing evidence of closing the gap. So when you see the difference, they're moving from the percent of students that are achieving that proficiency, if you just look at 3rd grade, for example, 2022 in the center, in 3rd grade, there was a gap of 15 percentage points between how our students performed and how the students overall in the state. That has decreased to 11 percentage points, again, with that effort of closing the gap and achieving the goals that we've set. This slide shows the same type of information, but for the area of mathematics, and again, the area, those segments that are highlighted in purple are showing evidence of closing the gap and making a difference in the overall performance. We thought it would be important to also let you do, take a look at some proficiency level comparison. So our team decided to create these graphs. Visually, I think it's easy to see the red, so if you're looking at that red, these are students performing at the lowest level. And you've heard our emphasis on providing academy time at the schools at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. That's that time where students are really working in a very small group, and in some cases, one-on-one with SSCs and tutors. What you should just, I wanted to point out is that on the left-hand side, in spring of 22, compared to the right-hand side, spring of 23, you're seeing that overall in grades 3 through 8 ELA, a pretty significant decrease in the students that are performing at that lowest level, again, with the effort of closing the gap. The next slide shows the same thing, only here, we are looking at proficiency level comparison for ELA 10. On the left-hand side, look how few students are falling into that lowest level. You'll see, you almost can't even, it's such a small number, it almost doesn't even show on the right-hand side. The next slide, we're looking at the same type of comparison, but it's grades 3 through 8 for mathematics. Once again, in this slide now, you'll notice that there was a 2% percentage point increase overall. And again, I think this is part of the urgency to really pay attention to what is happening in mathematics. What are some things that we're doing that are not giving our students the confidence and the competence to go in there and respond to those written responses in mathematics, which is something we recognize has been an ongoing struggle for our students. We'll talk about that more when we talk about what's next. And this next slide shows the comparison overall for Algebra 1, and I don't think there's anyone here that is not well aware that the level 1s, although the performance is nowhere near where we expect it to be, the celebration here is fewer students are performing at that lowest level. And now I'll turn it over to Amelia again to share a little bit about her other hat, the MISA Science Assessment.
So just a little bit about the two types of science assessments that I'm going to present tonight. We have our 5th grade and 8th grade data. Our 5th grade data shows that we were at a 27.1 percentage, and we were 7.4 away from the state. Last year, we were a 19 point, 19.8 percentage proficiency, and that was 10.8 away from the state. So we had a 7.3 increase in proficiency from the previous year, and this is, again, a 3.4 closer percentage to the state. So again, we're closing the gap in our 5th grade assessment, and we are doing some things to help move this along, which are really exciting in the area of science. For 8th grade, this is a little bit of a different story to tell. So we had a 7 point, 17.2 percentage, and we were 9.2% away from the state. Last year, we were 29.1 proficiency percentage, and we were 6.3 away from the state last year. But the story with this is overall, and the state has said this very clearly, that the state as a whole has dropped 9% proficiency points in the 8th grade MISA. So they are doing like studies to analyze this. Again, like the highest, Howard being our highest, our indicator, is 42% proficiency. So again, this is just something to consider when looking at all of this data, that the state as a whole is dipping in this specific test in this area. So they're analyzing that test.
And just a reminder...
And just a reminder that we moved towards a new curriculum. We, Ms. Marcosian did a really fine job looking at high-performing school systems in science and what are they using. And so we have, this board has adopted our new curriculum, which aligns itself to the highest-performing school systems in the state that are using this, that are using this curriculum. So we feel confident that it's going to help us move in the right direction and...
And the school districts that we looked at are still, last year they were high-ranking, and this year they're high-ranking as well, and they continue to use that same curriculum that we chose as well, which is a really exciting thing, that that data is backing up that curriculum that we decided to go along with. All right.
So, changes everywhere, and one of the things that we're excited about is the dedication of our administrators at the school level and their ability to give strong leadership and strong guidance to the professional learning communities at the school level. So the state provides this information, which includes a ton of various reports. They break down student performance not only by the school, but look at it by the grade level, they look at the demographic detail, and all of this information allows our teachers, once again, to do what we set out as an organization, which is to provide that personalized learning plan. Last year was the first time we identified students on the cusp, and that is a practice that we intend to continue this year. As we get that information and sit with our school teams, we will be seeing what specific strategies are needed to move those students so that they can respond to those three or four questions that may have been off a little bit and move them on the right track. Our district administrators are comparing the MCAP data to last year's data to share and look at instructional next steps to be put in place for this school year. I know that you love to hear what the schools are doing, and Dr. Couch and I, every year, look forward to those one-on-one meetings, which take place very soon, where they highlight specific strategies for their individual schools in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. Because our belief as a small district is that our job is to really go out and support to help meet those needs at the school level. So you'll hear some of those creative pieces that are happening as we move through the year as well. This year in secondary mathematics, one thing jumped out very clear is that we must focus on the reasoning and modeling, and that is something Nicole, I think, says in her sleep. So what's in store for this school year? In English Language Arts, this will be year two of the Science of Reading Letters Training, which stands for the Language Essential, I'm going blank now, Teaching of Reading, Language Essentials for Teaching of Reading, L E T R S, the Letters Training. Some of you may have noticed, Mr. Rhodes mentioned the Menary's, it wasn't Menary's Training, yes it was, they hosted the event, and several of our team, Dr. Keen was there, Dr. Costa was there, I know several of us, Michelle was with me, and we had joined this amazing opportunity to sit down and watch the movie together. And I don't think we ever felt more strongly that we are doing the right things in our district as the night when we left that movie. We are putting in place the practices for the Science of Reading, which includes helping our teachers get a really strong foundation in understanding what needs to be taught in phonics, phonological awareness, phonemic awareness. You'll hear more of this throughout the year. Both Dr. Costa and Michelle Serino are really hosting an incredibly comprehensive plan to address this in grades K through 2, and I'm very proud of the work that we are doing as a district. In mathematics, this is our core program, illustrative math for kindergarten and you know, for K through 5. And as you're aware, we also move that into our middle and high school. This year, MSDE is going to partner with us, and we had probably two meetings already. Nicole is really taking the lead on coordinating these, but I will tell you, Mr. Buckle and Kelly have jumped in, and they fully are ready to be hands-on with this whole lesson study process. So probably a decade ago, we did a similar thing with ELA, and it made a world of difference. So what you do is you sit down with a team of teachers, in this case, it will be the middle school math teachers, and you get the hands-on work as a collaborative team of looking at the core standards that you must focus on, unpacking them, going through, looking at the teaching strategies, and then get into the classroom to help support one another, what's going right, what isn't, how do you know, what's the evidence of the student work? So I'm super excited about what's happening at the middle school with this lesson study approach. And at the high school, Mrs. Hempstead and her team, for the first time, are offering year-long Algebra I. That's a big shift and a big undertaking at the school level. So that is something that we believe wholeheartedly is going to help really keep an eye and do something more tailored to the needs of students that seem to need more methodical explanation and more time to really understand the concepts of Algebra I. So rather than having it in one semester, they will be in it and take the assessment at the end of the school year. And finally, as Ms. Marcosian mentioned, we are adopting a new science curriculum K through 8. We are also piloting a new curriculum in our middle schools as well. All of the available MCAP data is to be used by the schools as part of our school improvement plan and school improvement process, and we look forward to sharing with you more ideas and specific explanations of what's happening at the school level throughout the school year. So, you know, we hope that we have shared some of the highlights and the proposed changes, and at this time, we'd like to give an opportunity for any questions or comments.
Thank you. I had asked Dr. Couch about this earlier, but I just wanted to bring it up here as well about wanting to see the data for student groups, but I understand that that is not available just yet.
Correct. So the only, it is available to our leadership, but not to anyone else at this moment, and as soon as we get it, we'll push it out to you. I think it should be due any day, but we can't push it out, it wasn't ready for tonight.
And then, would you mind going back to Slide 12?
Sure.
Which is the ELA 2019 to 2023 comparison?
They're not numbered in front of me, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the KCPS ELA 2019 to 2020 comparison.
Okay, right here.
Okay. The last time, I think you and I did it in a bit of an exercise when we went through this of following the age cohort. So I did the same between the 2022 and 2023, and I mean, the 2022 third graders who were then fourth graders in 2023 had an increase of 17 points. I mean, that's huge.
When you follow the cohort, that's really when the data speaks to you.
Exactly. Same with, and of course, it's not eighth grade to 10th grade, but a jump from that eighth grade of 27 to 10th grade of 59, which is an increase of 32 points. So I wanted to point those out and then move to the math slide, which is a little bit, a little bit different. And I think that we touched on this the last time, too, that there seems to be that when there's that transition from fifth to sixth grade, there seems to be a drop. So I, you know, I noticed the two biggest drops were between fifth and sixth, so there's a drop of eight points, and then between seventh and eighth, there's also a drop of eight points.
But eighth grade is also, just because the algebra piece, then there is a taking algebra, so that data is slightly shifted, so just like taking that into consideration, that is a slightly different population of students, I guess part of them are now removed taking Algebra I in eighth grade.
Gotcha. Well, it, a concentration, I think, in the middle school and in that transition from fifth to sixth grade, I think, is a good focus, but thank you.
But I think what's important and why that cohort data is important is because when you see this information up and you're just comparing third graders to third graders, you got to remember that it's a new set of third graders that you're comparing to the previous year of third graders, and their achievement level may be, and proficiency level may be completely different. But if you really want to see whether we're making a difference in achievement, follow the second graders as they move to third, the third graders as they move to fourth, and follow them up the way. And what you want to see is the trajectory going up, not going down.
And, yeah, and I did that for both of those, and that was where I saw those deep drops, unfortunately, but I mean, the numbers for ELA are impressive, I think, those jumps.
I think they're a result of that concentrated effort to improve early literacy. Teachers have done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a question. Okay, so, did the coaches help out a lot last year to raise these?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The coaches have been instrumental.
Yes, I agree, that looks good. How about the math? Did you have the same amount of coaches?
We did not. So we have, we have elementary coaches that split their time, so I would say we did not, but we had a large focus on our professional development in the area of literacy at the elementary level. So yes, we had a math coach in the middle school and a math coach in the high school, but no, we are not seeing the results that we hope to see.
So, it's a fact that the blueprint is law, and we're going to be spending more money on the students. Is more money going to come into the math program or into the ELA program, or both?
I don't know that I can answer that.
I'm just curious, because the county's going to be spending a lot of money, and we're building the school, and I want these grades to go up. I know you're working hard at it, but something just doesn't look right here. Is it the size of our county, or is it, I mean, some of these schools, our neighbors are way up there.
I know. I think, again, with mathematics from this, think about the range, the highest performing, if you take out the 38, we were at 27%, that's pretty much. So your highest performing's at 20, and your lowest performing's at 7. So I don't really think there's a celebration anywhere in the state. I don't think there's anything really to say, hey, look, that, they're top-notch. But yes, you may compare our district to other districts, as we do as well, and there are things that I think we can do differently. I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on to Administrative Services. Ms. Stewart.
Good evening, President Getz, Dr. Couch, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to start off with the monthly revenue expenditure report for August.
Their part's done.
And this is as of August 31st. As you will see, for Fund I, we received about 6.3 million. As of August 31st, for Fund V, 162,000, nothing for school construction or our Fund VII Trust and Agency, to give us a collective total of about 6.5 million in total cash receipts. For our expenditures, as you will see to date, we have expended about 22% in the current expense fund. In the school construction fund, we did not have a budget for fiscal year '24, so everything that's going for '23 is just to finish up the projects that we have already in place, which is the KCHS roof, and then you will see the KCMS visibility study. For food service, we've expended about 10% of the funding, and our restricted funds, about estimated 75% based on what we have migrated over for, what we have for new grants for fiscal year '24, as we have not completed, we're still in the process of completing our audit, and will do our budget transfers for our restricted grants. And then here's your funding overview of all receipts and expenditures as of August 31st, 2023. Any questions?
Are we getting close, or have we finished the roof?
I think we're close to being done with the roof.
They've cleared out all of their stuff. The only thing they're doing is final punch list items, and then, of course, they still have the lettering and the, and the logo that we're still trying to resolve and get approved, but besides that, they're pretty well done.
Okay.
Great. Okay, that was for information purposes only, no actions required. With that being said, we'll move over to the Unrestricted Funds Budget Amendment Number Two.
All right. So for this budget amendment, administration is requesting board approval. This is the second budget amendment that we have for 2023. As you will see, in review of our fiscal year 2023 year-end process, we have budget amendments that are needed. For fiscal year '23, we were over-expending our areas of operations, maintenance, and transportation, and as you will also see with the given memo, the noted amounts in which we were over. So where it says, for examples, operations increased category by 132,986,093 cent, that will let you know that those are the categories that we need to increase, as we cannot balance, we cannot complete our audit with having overages. So in order to do this, we'll be taking available funding in the category areas of fixed charges, administration, and mid-level administration, other instructional costs, instructional salary, other instructional costs, instructional salary, then we have our student health services, as also our instructional, our other instructional costs, we have to increase as well, as well as our student pupil services. So in order to do this, my thought process was to pull from those areas that are similar and are alike, and it is noted in the memo. So administration is requesting board approval for the Unrestricted Funds Budget Amendment Number Two for fiscal year 2023. Before approval, if you have any questions, I am able to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Stewart?
Yeah, I've got a question. So, this will wrap it up. I mean, we're not going to come back next month and find out that we still need, okay.
No.
Any additional questions? Okay, as Ms. Stewart mentioned, board approval is requested for the Unrestricted Funds Budget Amendment Number Two for fiscal year 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any additional comments or questions?
I just head-scratcher here, is it, does this kind of thing usually happen at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no other questions or comments, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. The next item on the agenda is Policy IFC, Educational Equity.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring for you, for information only, some slight revisions to our adopted educational equity policy. In 2019, we adopted this, however, since then, there have been some changes in COMAR, and we wanted to be sure to update our policies so it reflects those recent changes. The revisions, proposed revisions include aligning the local equity definition with COMAR, and one of the terms that they use is the language of being able to consider decisions through an equity lens. So you'll see that reflected in our language as well. Also, to ensure access to effective teachers and to provide opportunities for all students to read on level by the end of Grade 2. And I think I heard a little similar comment about that earlier today. So now what COMAR is suggesting or requiring is that we put that in our policy as well, that our intent is to provide opportunities for all students to read on level by the end of Grade 2. And finally, to include equity initiatives as part of our strategic plan, or ESSA plan, and that is an important component of our plan as well. So again, this is for information only, unless you have any questions.
Well, we brought back for approval at the next board meeting.
I did a little comparing and contrasting on the policy, as I like to do, and came across something that I didn't know if it would be appropriate to include in our policy, where they talk about school climate and culture affecting student success, and a description that I found said, "In order for all students to be successful academically, schools must create a safe, welcoming, supportive, and affirming environment." And I didn't know if that was something that we would consider including in our education equity policy. I can send you the text also.
Sure. I mean, absolutely, we can look at that.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, that was for information only, we'll see that come back at a future date.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is Policy D, Fiscal Management Procedures Manual Review. Ms. Stewart?
All right. So this Policy D, we're bringing forth to you for review, no action is required at this time. So Policy D is our Fiscal Management Procedures Manual Policy, and I'm going to pull up the document here. Oh, sorry. Thanks, Bill. So as you will see here, this is the Fiscal Management Procedures Manual Policy. And in review of the policy, we just have some changes that we would like to make to update for, to kind of bring this policy up to date. So as you notice, the purpose of it initially was to say to require development procedures for financial services and routine updates. We're looking to take out the manual and to mandate. So essentially, it would just say to require development procedures for financial services and routine updates. If you come down, looking to remove the manual containing procedures, essentially, we do have fiscal management procedures, not necessarily a manual. We could technically create one, but we have all of our procedures together. So this would bring it up to date to let the board know that related to the board policy and legal mandates for the operation of fiscal management program, these procedures would be, you know, adhered to and looked at. And also for the last sentence to update to state, updates will be made as the situation dictates. So if there's any questions on these proposed changes, I can definitely answer that.
Any questions for Ms. Stewart?
I, just out of curiosity, and I think that you did say this, this policy was first adopted in 2002, but since that time, a manual was never actually developed?
Well, if there was a manual, we can't find the manual. I think what has happened over time, and that essentially, part of that happened when Ms. Towers was here, we adopted a, a whole bunch of procedures that pretty much took the place of the manual. But this reflects our, our standard practice.
Got you. Well, thank you.
And this will be brought back for approval at the next.
Great, thank you. This was for information only. No action required at this time. We'll move on to Policy DA. D is a dog. A, Fiscal Management Goals Review. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Got it.
So this is another policy that administration is bringing to the board for review. And this is Policy DA, Fiscal Management Goals. Not much was needed to make any changes or updates. The, it was adopted in November 2001. So essentially, majority of this policy, we have been following, and it is current to what we are doing. However, the line noted the bottom of the first paragraph, we would like it to update to reflect, to oversee the fiscal management. The administration will provide the KCBOE with a monthly expenditure and revenue report, an annual fund balance projected, projection update at every board meeting. So kind of changing this to bring us up to date will put our policy in full.
And again, years ago, I think there was, we had a lot more school, we had a lot more personnel, we were considerably larger than we are now. And we really don't have a fiscal affairs staff. And superintendent is pretty much involved in the day-to-day of, of the budget and financial affairs. So it didn't make sense. We wanted it to reflect what we've got in place now, which we hadn't been doing in the past, which is providing you with the monthly expenditures and revenue report and the fund balance. So we wanted to, to codify that into the policy.
Great. Any questions? That was for information only. No action required at this time. The next policy is DAA, Fiscal Management Priorities Review.
So this policy, there was actually, there were actually no changes. In review of the policy, we are pretty much in line with this policy, but still wanted to bring it to the board at this time. There's no action required. If there's any conversation or any questions for this, but we're pretty much in line, but still wanted to bring it forth because, as you see, this one was adopted as well in November 2001. So just bring, so that, to bring light to it, so we kind of document.
Yeah. We just wanted to document that we reviewed it. It's not out of date, but we brought it to you for consideration.
Very good. Any questions on that? Okay, no action required at this time. It's for information only. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. The next item is Policy CC, Administrative Organizational Plan.
Okay, so this policy is brought before you for, to reflect the changes that we've made in our organizational chart. It reflects some positions that were eliminated and also some positions that were altered. In particular, the Coordinator of Accountability and CTE. As you know, we had a different title for that position. That was Mr. Porter. And now he is going to be assuming CTE. And the Career Counselor, the new position, which is through the blueprint, he will be overseeing the day-to-day responsibilities of the Career Counselor. You also see the elimination of the Assistant Coordinator for Special Education. And you see the elimination of the Assistant Coordinator, or the Coordinator in Student Services. And you see that the Turency Officer is, been eliminated, and we've added back in the PPW.
Great.
This will be brought back for approval at the next board meeting.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
Excellent for you, Mr. Getz. So I'm looking at this chart here, and has the Kent County citizens vote for the Board of Education? Okay. And the Board of Education votes for the superintendent, which I wasn't involved, but they voted for the superintendent. So who, it has Kent County citizens, Board of Education, and superintendent. Who basically, is the Board of Education tell the superintendent what to do? That's what this chart looks like. Or does the superintendent tell the board what to do? Or do you tell us what to do? I'm trying to figure how this all works.
So, so the Kent County citizens vote us on?
Yeah.
So that's where the, that's where the genesis is of this org chart. From there, so we are the Board of Education.
Okay.
And at our choice, if the time comes, we will vote, or go through a superintendent evaluation process to bring the superintendent in, whoever that may be. And then the superintendent that directs all of the folks listed there. We have always, in my tenure here, had a collaboration between the board, the full board, as well as the superintendent. As a superintendent is an officer of the board. And we function accordingly. So we don't, so we don't look at it. Please.
But we don't, we don't direct anything in the day-to-day operations of schools.
Right.
And that means we don't direct the superintendent into day-to-day operations of schools. And we don't direct the superintendent to direct the other administrators or staff in regards to the day-to-day operations of schools.
So, so in a traditional org chart, where if I take my school board hat off and I put my business hat on, and what you have alluded to many times or mentioned about the business side of it, the org chart functions very differently because there is, there is that senior role, if you will, that directs and has that kind of directive, if you will, where if I wanted to drill down to, you know, an associate that's four layers down, then I would feed it, I would still feed it through the path that's there. With this, this just establishes the seats. But there is no, in my experience in this, in this role, we do evaluate the superintendent. But it's more collaborative, and it's always been that way. It's not the same, in my mind, I've never viewed it as being the same type of org chart.
It just doesn't look right to me. That's, in my own opinion, it just looks like we got a list. Kent County citizens vote for us, and then we pick the superintendent. But the superintendent basically tells us what we can do. And I just, I don't, I don't understand that. But that's just the way you have described it to me. So I'll have to agree with you. It just doesn't look.
Yeah, I look at it, as I mentioned, I mean, I look at it as a collaboration, right? So, so, I mean, there, as Ms. Sullivan mentioned, I mean, there are things that the superintendent will manage that's not in our purview. And then there, there are things that we work with and we oversee from that 36,000-foot.
I understand.
I'm not sure what you mean, though, when you say the superintendent tells us what to do.
You're not sure? I want to do things sometimes, and the superintendent says you can't do it.
But that's not the superintendent telling you that. That is, that is the rule of the position as a board member. And it is the same on every school board.
Well, okay, so I want to go to something, I want to go to something right now. I'm looking at the school visitor policy. And I think when this was put through, what, last year, because I remember I visited all the schools before I got this job. I wanted to find out what's going on. I got permission. Well, right at the end of last year, you voted to have it, and it has to get permission. You changed the whole visitor, you know, policy. And I've been reading through some of these parts of it. And I don't see where we have to get permission from the superintendent to go to these schools. I think we can go right to the principal. But every time you do it, then they say, well, you got to call the superintendent. I don't believe it. I think board members have more authority to go into those schools, as we were voted by the people of the county, Kent County, than the superintendent can tell us what to do.
So the board members have the authority to let the teachers teach, and the administrators administer, and the superintendent to manage our school system?
I don't agree with, I don't agree with that. And I think we should have more authority. That's all I'm saying. We were voted by the people of the county. We should be able to go in, just like when I, four, whenever it was, four months ago, went into the middle school. And I, and I went through the resource officer, which is the way to do it. And I saw all those disruptions and all those kids arguing. Okay? And then there was finally change four weeks later. But, you know, no one says anything about it. But we have a new administrator in there. I think that we should have the ability to go into a school to call and not have to wait two days to see what's going on. I'm just telling you.
Individual board members have zero authority.
Well, maybe you have zero authority. I think I have more because I want to.
You can think that, but it's.
I am going to think that, okay?
The board operates as a unit. We are a unit. And you have no authority individually as a board member outside of this room.
So you get permission to go in any of these schools?
May I finish, please?
No. You got permission to go into these schools?
Yes. If I need to go into the school, it's usually about my child. There's no reason.
I just have a serious problem with how this is managed. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I.
Thank you. Duly noted.
Thank you.
Ms. Gale, do we have, Ms. Manley, do we have any public participation? Okay, we'll move into the notification of our next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County will be a board retreat on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023. It's been established to be at 8:00 in the morning. And that will be in the Fishbowl in this building. The next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, October 9th, 2023, beginning at 5:30 PM. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. Both meetings will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, 5608 Boundary Avenue in this room, Rock Hall, Maryland, 21661. The last item on the agenda is to adjourn. The administration is recommending approval to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion to do so?
I motion.
Ms. Dorsey has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? Hearing them, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ms. Messick?
Aye.
We have ayes have the vote. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have